Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The regular meeting of the Goseo Township Planning Commission will come to order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving into the first item on the agenda, which is additions and/or deletions to the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to change the agenda from that proposed? If not, they'd entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Motion from Eric, support?
Support.
Support from Jody. Call a question or in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The agenda stands as presented. The next item is the review and approval of the minutes from the May 2, 2011 meeting. Are there any comments on those minutes? Eric?
No comments.
Jody?
No.
Ann? Jay?
No.
Jim?
No comments.
Brian?
Nope.
Okay, entertain a motion, please, to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Motion from Eric, support?
Support.
Support from Ann. Call a question or in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Minutes are approved. So we'll move now to public comment, an opportunity for citizens to speak about any item they have, they want to talk about that's not currently on the agenda. Anybody wish to speak about an item not on the agenda? Mr. Ream?
Not on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dale Ream, Township Manager. I spoke to the DPS Director probably about a half an hour ago, and he asked me to make this announcement. For those of you that commuted down Meridian Road after 8:30 this morning knew that they had the road closed for a water main repair. The water main repair is complete, and they've done a temporary patch on the road. He asked that I announce next Monday they're going to be doing partial closures while they do the permanent road repair where the county requirement requires a layer of nine inches of concrete to be poured, then capped with asphalt. So that will be taking place next Monday, so there will be some inconvenience in partial enclosures.
Where on Meridian was that?
Meridian Road, near Lakewood, between Church and Thoroughfare.
Okay. All right. So everybody's duly advised.
Yes.
Excellent.
The notices will be placed on cable and on the webpage as far as the details and if there are any changes. Well, thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move now to the election of officers. This is an activity we go through once a year. I will run through a little bit of the background, as well as the process, and then we'll vote on officers. The Planning Commission does have three officers, a Chair, a Vice Chair, and a Secretary. The election process and the terms of office are all regulated by our zoning ordinance, as well as by our Planning Commission bylaws. In the zoning ordinance, it's under Section 24.3B, which is Planning Commission and its operation. Reads as follows, quote, "The Planning Commission shall elect a Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. The terms of office shall be one year and shall expire June 1st. Officers may not hold other publicly elected office on Goseo." Unquote. The bylaws specifically state that the election process is by voice vote. So I propose that we run through this process in this order. Address the Chair first, Vice Chair, and then Secretary. I will describe the positions. I'll entertain any motions, followed by discussion and a vote on each position, one at a time. If there's more than one candidate, then I will ask for a roll call vote, okay? And then following that, I will ask for a motion of unanimous support for whoever is specifically elected. Before I proceed, does anybody have any questions about this or comments? Everybody okay? Okay, then let's start with the Chair. The Chair, primary functions are to facilitate the meetings, set the agenda, provide procedural guidance to applicants in conceptual review meetings, and provide directions to staff on Planning Commission issues. So, at this point, I'll open the floor to motions for Chair.
I nominate John Schuykert as Chairperson.
We have a motion for...
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Motion from Ann, support. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you very much, folks. I appreciate your support.
I heard unanimous seconds on that one.
Next is the position of Vice Chair. The Vice Chair basically substitutes for the Chair in all the issues and all the areas that I just described. I would entertain now motions for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Jay.
We have a motion from Jody to nominate Jay.
Second.
We have a support from Ann. Are there other motions? I'll call a question. All in favor of Jay continuing as our Vice Chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations, sir. It's a pleasure having you sit to my right.
Good to be here. I'm glad you're to my left. Much happier to your right than if you were not to my left.
Okay, let's move now to the position of Secretary. The Secretary validates the minutes that are prepared by staff and provides the legal signature for our township records. And so at this point, I would entertain a motion, please, for Secretary.
The position is open.
Position is well occupied. Okay, entertain a motion.
I'd like to nominate Ian.
A second.
We have a motion from Jody for Ann to continue as Secretary. We have support from Jay. Are there other motions? Call a question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, definitely.
It's no longer open.
Motion carried. Ann, thank you very much for your service.
I'm glad you're at my left.
Okay, so that completes the election of officers for this year. So, let's move now to the next item, which is a sketch plan review, installation of a jet ski hoist. Okay, the applicant is Michael Carmen, Esquire 2915 Biddle, Suite 200, Windott, on behalf of the property owner, Randall Pentiuk, of 30013 East River Road, Goseo. The location is legally Lot 52 of Hickory Island. The common address is 30013 East River, Goseo, and this is located at pretty much the very south end of Hickory Island. The proposal is to install a jet ski lift on an existing dock structure. The zoning is R-1F, single-family residential. The ordinances that are relevant here are Article 17 waterfront provisions, and specifically 17.4 waterfront regulations or requirements, and 17.5, the public hearing procedure. The process, as outlined in Article 17, follows. An application is actually received at the township. It's a building permit application. At that point, neighbors are notified, and then if the neighbors so request, a public hearing is scheduled with the Planning Commission. And then from that, the Planning Commission makes a decision, and the Planning Commission in this case is the final decision maker. Now, in this process, at the last meeting, or the meeting of April 4, I should say, we did hold a public hearing on this application, and the result was that the application was tabled, and it was tabled for basically several reasons. The first was dimensions on the sketch from the property line weren't clear to document conformance with setbacks. There was some clarification needed on maintenance and on lighting and on dredging. There were some points that were raised in the public hearing that needed clarification. And finally, the last point was the number of jet skis actually involved in the application, whether it was one or two. So, on that note, the applicant went off and has resubmitted information for us tonight to review. So at this point, I will only say that I would expect, again, the Planning Commission to vote on this application tonight. So, Brian, could you please elaborate on what has changed since the first submittal?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair, and a great summary. That's very helpful to get us back on track from where we were. The new information provided in your package, you had a cover letter from Mr. Carmen, you had a revised sketch plan, and you also had some representative photographs that were submitted. I believe Mr. Carmen has brought in some additional photos this evening, which are currently on the screen, and I believe were handed out as an additional supplemental information. Did all of the commissioners get these, Mr. Carmen?
I believe they did, yes.
Okay. So there are some new photos as well, and I think the, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna start in order of the points that you just raised that we needed to discuss, but I'm gonna hit first are the ones that I feel comfortable with, and then I think there's still, you know, one point of clarification that I think we need to focus on for the discussion this evening. The first would be as it relates to maintenance, lighting, dredging, et cetera. The revised sketch plan has provided essentially a footnote to it indicating they will do proper maintenance twice a year, that there will be no lighting, so we've confirmed that. Remind you that lighting is permitted, it just has to be within that, the specifications required by your ordinance, but they are not proposing any lighting, and they've also noted that no dredging is proposed. So we've at least confirmed those elements that were up for question the last time we discussed this. The other item that we have since confirmed is the dimensional standards, specifically being making sure that this lift would comply with the setback requirements. As you'll recall, your ordinance has a six-foot minimum setback for any boat, personal watercraft, et cetera, to be docked, stored, lifted, whatever it may be, from the nearest side property line. So there was some question about that with some slight changes in the discussion to the jet ski lift. Last time, this new plan does confirm, actually, the near edge of the lift is 12 feet off the side lot line. So we're clearly within ordinance standards as it relates to the dimensions. I think the biggest item, and this is where I started to discuss the item I think we need to discuss this evening, was this confirmation of use of a single lift or single hoist jet ski. The representative photos that were originally submitted were all of double jet ski lifts, which was a tad confusing to me. And then additionally, it still appears to me that the revised sketch is still implying a double jet ski lift. So I think, honestly, Mr. Chair, I think what we need to do is just have some discussion with the applicant and try to make sure that we are clear as to what the request is that's before us tonight. My understanding after the last meeting was that these items would be corrected and that we would see a single jet ski lift, and hopefully we can have some resolution with this tonight with the applicant in attendance here.
Okay, before we move to the applicant, any questions for Brian? Okay, Mr. Carmen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Now, I think you've heard the introduction and the open issue that remains. Would you talk about this, please?
I'd be happy to. As Mr. Bourdon said, there is a point of somewhat ambiguity on this diagram, and for which that is, that's my responsibility, and I do apologize for that. We reduced the size of the platform. It was previously 10 by 10, and we did get permission from the State and the Army to do a 10 by 10 lift, the hoist. That has been reduced to 10 by 8 to accommodate a single jet ski. The pictures here that are on the overhead as well as that I gave you, they're both of the same hoist on that single page there. That shows a 10 by 8 hoist, single jet ski, a single mooring for it. Now, what's confusing about the diagram before you is that it says jet skis. That's just something I didn't notice, and that's my fault, and I do apologize. It should say jet ski. It says, if you look to the right of the platform, it says one jet ski lift, and I think also what Mr. Bourdon alluded to on the confusion on the diagram of the hoist was that there's two horizontal, which appear to be wells, but actually the jet ski's tip would face the top of the hoist. It says seven feet, three inches, if you see what I mean. It would be, the jet ski would go in this way and not that way.
Okay, we can't, please put it on the screen. So the drawing is incorrect.
The jet skis will go north to south during the lift.
Okay, why do we have a drawing that shows it the opposite direction?
Okay. It does not, well, it says one jet ski lift. The jet skis will face from north to south, not east to west.
Okay, well, with all due respect, okay, you've had two months to get the drawing straight. We were clear on what we wanted, and we're still looking at wrong drawings. So please show exactly what's on here and point it out.
Okay. Right here, the jet ski, the tip of it is gonna be facing right there. The single jet ski will be driven in right here, and that will be the mooring that it's docked on. And that's similar to this view here. The mooring right there, be driven in that way, and that would be corresponding to east and west right here, the east being that side.
Okay, what else would you care to add?
As Mr. Bourdon said, this commission had several requirements. They wanted the statement of no lighting, no dredging, maintenance in spring and fall, and those are all stated on the bottom of the plan that you have, and also that it fell within the setback as we displayed. It does. The 12 feet right there, and also that it would just be for a single jet ski, which it is.
Okay. At this point, we'll go to the audience to find out if there are any questions or comments from the audience. Anybody who would care to comment on this? Yes, sir, come on up, please, and give us your name and your address and speak into the microphone.
My name is Bill Swayze. I live at 30007 East River Road, Goseo, which is on Hickory Island, and I'm here representing the Hickory Island Company. As I've stated before, the Hickory Island Company has nearly 100 years in experience of people trying to properly store boats out in front in the lake and river, particularly from Lot 10 through 54. And in all these years of history, there has never been a satisfactory long-term boat kept in that area because of the conditions of the waves and the wind. So we always worry about the possibility of accidents. For instance, in this particular situation here where you have the ski boat that comes in and comes toward the wall and then makes a U-turn and goes toward that lift, we have on many occasions very shallow water there, and there isn't much opportunity for error in that particular application, which is what they are asking to do. So we want to point that out as a possible danger. The lot to the west of this particular jet ski lift has large pond concrete, I call them coins, there are other words for them. They're large, they're about this high from the ground, and there's four of them there to the west, and they're designed to break up the waves that come in before they hit the seawalls. And those were put in there by the late Grandbécage some 50 years ago or so, based on years of experience of being there. Since we had the last meeting, we had a fishing boat sink out in front of our Lot 26 due to the conditions of the water, and fortunately, the people who reside there were at home, and they were able to inform the authorities, and they did come out and save those lives. So that was good. We've lost three kayaks since that time that were blown off whichever method that they were being held to the ground or to the wall, one of them at the Pentiuk residence, where during the last year, we also saw a 20-foot boat that was moored there with the rear and side of it smashed quite a bit because it bounced against the seawall. My hope is that we take this to the next dimension, in that you think of it not only as a person asking for a boat to be put out in front there, but I'd like you to look at it from a safety aspect, and this is the most germane thing that we can think of, the largest worry that we have as residents of Hickory Island. Thank you for the time that you've allotted me, and thank you for your volunteer efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Swayze. Is there any other comment from the audience? Okay, we'll bring it back, and Brian. Okay, we've kind of said, we've said all along, you know, in terms of what our criteria are that we're using for judging whether this application is acceptable or not acceptable, and I know, you know, we had a legal opinion about the Hickory Island articles that they have, that they regulate, that we regulate relative to the ordinances. So I would like you to comment, please, about the ordinances. What are the issues that were raised? How are these impacted by, there was basically a danger issue, and essentially, I guess you would call it damage, you know, that could occur as a result of where the applicant is proposing this. What role does the ordinance play in these factors?
Well, realistically, Mr. Chair, you know, while certainly it's not our goal to encourage and promote anything that's gonna be unsafe, there really is nothing that speaks to that particular aspect, and at least in part, and I understand Mr. Swayze has a tremendous amount of experience in this area, but that's the opinion of one man, and I don't know, I don't know that we know for certain that by allowing this lift to go in, that we're setting ourselves up for any type of a safety-type issue. In terms of the ordinance standards, we have placement issues in terms of setbacks and sizes. We have limitations on the numbers of watercraft and/or boats that can be stored. We have maintenance provisions, and we have lighting provisions, and those are really, you know, going back a couple of months now, that was the focus of our review letter. And I think as long as we can get the confirmation that this is a lift for a single jet ski, then I'm of the opinion that the ordinance standards are met.
Okay.
And I think maybe part of it becomes, I mean, certainly it's a responsibility of Mr. Carmen's client to operate his jet skis in a safe manner. I don't know that we can control that, and I don't know that by denying a jet ski lift, we're going to prevent any safety issues. By no means am I an expert in voter safety either, so please, you know, understand that as well. That's a whole different hat, and I'm not gonna put that one on.
However, you are an expert on ordinances.
I, well...
On ours specifically, so...
If I could ask for clarification?
Yes, please. If I understand you correctly, what you're saying is our ordinances are what are designed to protect safety to the extent safety is a consideration of this commission, and if there are concerns about the safety, those things should be incorporated into the ordinances that are drafted, and we don't have kind of independent purview to say, well, we have independent safety considerations that aren't addressed in the ordinances. Is that a fair way to say it?
Yes.
Is there anything in the ordinances that gives us the ability to consider safety outside of, you know, is there a general clause that says, and anything else that the commission may want to require for...
Well, the, the one I'll go back to is simply the, you know, the maintenance provision, which we've talked to on a couple of occasions. I mean, the structure has to be maintained in a safe and operable condition. You know, they can't let it fall into disrepair, but that's probably about as close as I would say that it gets in terms of an actual regulation.
Okay. Additional thoughts or questions for Brian?
The only question I have, and it seems like it's a moot point in this issue since the applicant is coming forward with a single jet ski lift. What I read in the ordinance says that you can have a number of boats plus a jet ski. I don't see anywhere in there that it would deny two jet skis and no boats, and I don't know that we're gonna solve that tonight, and I don't expect that we solve it tonight, but I expect that we do solve that at a future zoning update, because I think that's ambiguity on our zoning ordinance that needs to be spoken to.
Okay, I'd like to get some clarification on that, Brian.
Yeah.
Could you please run through the ordinance section and what specifically that Eric was referring to?
Yeah.
And what the ambiguity is.
The specific regulation is the one that really is, I think, the big focus tonight, and that is one boat and one personal watercraft per 33 feet of waterfrontage. In this case, the size of the property limits them to that, they're just over 33 feet, so they can have one boat and one personal watercraft. The way this has always been applied, at least historically, at least in my tenure with the township, is that essentially that meant you can have a boat and you can have a jet ski in addition to your boat. It really has never come up, can I have two jet skis instead of a boat and a jet ski? I think what we really have to do is take a little bit deeper look and go to the definitions whereby we have separate definitions for a boat, and then also what doesn't help with the ambiguity is the fact that the other definition is listed as boat slash personal watercraft. To me, the jet ski is a personal watercraft. The boat is a boat, as I've said before. I think we may have gotten into this a little bit last time, and I've been of the opinion that it would not allow, the interpretation we've made would not allow for two jet skis as opposed to one boat and one jet ski. But I certainly understand where Commissioner Ranka's coming from.
Okay, questions on that, Mr. Chair?
Maybe somebody can, I was a little confused with the packet, and we've got the definition of what is a boat. That was in, that was in the packet, wasn't it?
It's in the...
Oh, it was in the additional, that's what it was. Is that the purpose of the additional, of the definition of what is a boat? Is that for some application of that question, or what was the intent there?
Well, yeah, as Commissioner Ranka alluded to last time, and as is in the minutes from the last meeting in April, he did suggest that we clarify the ordinance regarding the issue on personal watercrafts, the one boat, one watercraft kind of dichotomy that's there. And as he also said, we're not sure if that's appropriate for this forum or meeting. However, I did include, as Mr. Bourdon alluded to, in the event that this commission decides that it is, what the definition of a boat in the ordinances is. And I included that in there to say that it's a solid argument that a boat, that a jet ski, this is personal watercraft, could be considered a boat by the plain language of the definition in the ordinance. As Mr. Bourdon said, he hasn't seen this come up before. I work with Kirk Kovalak, who is the supervisor, and he says that he has seen this come up before. He didn't remember the specific case, he didn't remember when or the address, but he was of the firm opinion that previously this had come up, and a jet ski was allowed to be classified as a boat. Now, that's if this ordinance issue comes to fruition. But tonight, as we've previously said, this is just a single jet ski lift, and we want to abide by the terms of the ordinance as Mr. Bourdon suggested last time.
Okay. It sounds like it's a good question. Is it correct?
To my thinking, it is.
Okay.
Because the applicant is requesting only one jet ski. Okay, let's go around the table, and let's entertain some questions and comments for the applicant. Brian, let's start with you.
Yeah, I had a question about, you know, since the deck was revised from 10 by 10 to 8 by 10, was the power, motor-powered lift actually revised too? Is there like a separate lift, or could the deck actually be retrofitted after the fact if we go back to 10 by 10 and support two watercrafts?
I think this would be a question best answered by our contractor here.
All the gearbox for the jet skis is our standard, so no, if you answer your question, it did not change.
I don't believe I have any further questions.
Okay. Mr. Davis?
I'm offsite. No questions. Thank you.
Jay?
None.
Ann?
I think we may have kind of strayed a little bit from what we're really approving. We're not approving the jet ski. We are approving the structure, and it's like just if you were doing the regular boat well. What size boat? We're not doing it for the boat. We're doing it for the structure. And if everything... And if everything is up, which I think it does, then we will be approving the structure. And it incidentally is for a jet ski.
Okay. Jody?
There was, I thought I heard two different ways that the jet ski was going. I think you said it was going east to west and you said it was going north to south. I'm just trying to clarify which way the jet ski is coming in. That's all.
It's going to sit, it's going to sit just like in, excuse me, it's going to sit just like it was in the picture from north to south?
North to south, okay. I just want to confirm that because I thought I heard both, so.
I'm sorry, I think that's my fault. I think I got my east and west confused there.
Okay. That's all. That's all. That's the only, I just wanted clarification of that. Thank you.
Eric? I'd just like to say, you know, I appreciate the Hickory Island company's, you know, bylaws and I appreciate the fact that you guys are fighting to keep those bylaws intact. At the end of the day, though, this commission is responsible for the zoning ordinances of Groseal. And if we were to be challenged for denying something because it meets the zoning ordinances but doesn't meet a particular homeowners association clause, then you would be responsible for that legal bill, which is not clearly our legal bill. So I appreciate the homeowners association, but at the end of the day, this proposed structure does meet our Groseal ordinances. And I think that denying this request would be basically taking away property rights from this individual.
Thank you. I have several questions and comments. Okay. I am concerned about the fact that this shows the entryway to the deck coming in the opposite direction from what you penciled in or inked in here at the meeting. Will this unit, as configured with an 8 by 10 dimension, accommodate two as shown with coming in from the side?
Both lifts, 10 by 10 or 10 by 8, if set up, can accommodate two lifts. But this is set up the way the pictures show for one lift from north to south and that's it?
What is the difference in setup between a lift, I'm looking at the picture now and I'm trying to judge how wide that is for a single lift. Now, that to me is a single lift for a single jet ski. And I doubt that that is eight feet wide. So could you tell me, please, what is the dimension of this particular draw, of this picture you've got? And how is it different from the sketch that we've got that says it's eight feet wide?
It's different by two feet.
So this is six feet. What is the picture? Is where I'm getting to. What is the dimension on the picture relative to jet ski? A jet ski is typically four feet wide, I think, just judging. And this looks to me to be about a six-foot wide platform. Is that a correct statement?
No.
It's not? Okay, then tell me what, can you tell me, please, about this picture?
To answer your question, the picture in the photograph and the new revised drawing are the same, is what I'm saying.
You're telling me that, okay, so how wide is this jet ski?
It's, you can see that, correct that vision?
Now, it's upside down now for us.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. It's basically, so you got a room to put jet ski and you're able to walk around the platform, around the jet ski, get on as you're lowering it, if there's more than one person getting on that jet ski.
But the picture doesn't look like it.
The picture does not show that.
Picture doesn't look like it. So the picture's confusing.
So.
Well, you have all the clarifications that you want from us and it will be documented and noted, and it will be to what?
Okay, well, I guess, again, you know, I got to keep coming back to this. Your actual proposal, your original building permit application says the purpose of this lift is to keep the jet skis, plural, out of the water. So that was what was originally submitted to the township, okay? We then get a drawing which shows a 10 by 10, okay, for which there was no clarification for the planner about a single jet ski. It did not come up, it was assumed until the middle of the meeting, basically, at the public hearing. And our planner, who is a detail guy, was surprised. So the next thing that happens is we get a drawing that shows jet skis, a revised drawing from you showing two coming in from the side, okay, in the same picture configuration. And then you come to the meeting and show us, oh, it isn't that way, it's north-south as opposed to east-west. So, you'll pardon my skepticism here, I hear what you say, but I believe what I see. And this is my problem. Now, if in fact, this is for a single jet ski, okay, and I look at this picture, this is perfectly acceptable to me. I have no objection to a jet ski, okay, that's perfectly fine. What I have objection to is building a facility which will accommodate more. Because as Ann said, what we're approving is the structure. And if the structure accommodates one, we're in full compliance with the zoning ordinance, the operation will be consistent with what we approved, and there are no issues. When something gets built, overbuilt in essence, okay, now the option, not necessarily you or the applicant, but the next person down the line that might own that house, is now an issue. Okay? And so, my point here is, what is the minimum dimension that would be acceptable for a single jet ski? Is it six feet? Is it five feet? What matches up with that drawing?
What matches up with the drawing that we have here?
You know, the picture that you showed, okay, what dimensions would that eight-foot dimension be if it lined up with that picture? Would it be six feet? Would it be five feet? What would it be?
Did you say it was six?
It was six feet.
Okay. Six feet, flat out could not accommodate two jet skis. So, and so if the structure were approved at six feet and all you want is one jet ski, is a six-foot dimension acceptable to you?
How critical is two feet?
Very critical. Because it represents the difference between having two jet skis or one.
Well, we've already reduced it by two foot one way.
Okay? I'm asking you to reduce, you know, I'm asking the question about what is the minimum for a single jet ski? And you're telling me it's six feet. If this planning commission approved a six-foot width, okay, and you can go your way and have a single lift just like what you want, I don't see what the issue is there.
I would think that would be enough for one jet ski. And what Chris was trying to point out is that you need a little bit of extra room on that platform to be able to maneuver around it, to be able to cover it, to be able to take things in and out of the storage, to things of that nature. But I would think that six feet would be enough width-wise for one jet ski.
It would be, but that's not what it was.
That's correct. Okay. So. Would six feet be acceptable to you?
Yes.
As the applicant?
Yes, and I understand your skepticism as far as can the platform accommodate one or two? Or I see what you mean down the line, could it be altered? And, you know, that is a very valid point and something we definitely now consider. And if it's incumbent upon this commission to restrict it to six feet so it can accommodate one and one only, that is something we're fine with. Because as we stated and as was in my cover letter that I think you got with the packet previously, was that it's for a single jet ski, plain and simple. There was an ambiguity on this drawing as far as these right here. Those were not intended to be wells. Those were not intended to be wells. The drawing could have been better and I take full responsibility for that.
Okay.
However, I stand by my statement previously in that letter now that this will be for a single jet ski. And that's that.
Okay, well, my opinion on this is I am perfectly acceptable with a structure which accommodates a single jet ski. It's entirely, you're entirely entitled to it from the ordinance standards and that might be what you should get. Anything beyond that, in my opinion, you should not get. So, from my perspective, for me to support this, I would ask this structure be six feet wide. Comments or questions on that?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
What is the depth, the length of a jet ski? The minimum length of the deck that would require for the length of the jet ski? So would it be 10 feet? Would it be seven feet or six feet?
Are you asking me?
Yes, please.
Excuse me, Brian, they vary from 10 feet to nine, five to eight feet, but depends on which ones you have.
Okay, so the 10-foot dimension would line up nicely with the 10-foot match that you're talking about?
That is correct.
Okay. Other questions, Brian?
No.
Jim?
No, nothing. Thank you.
Jay?
No.
Ann? Jody?
No.
Eric? No, if the applicant's okay with a six-foot width, I'm okay with a six-foot width. I just would add that there are platforms like this all over the island. Some are used for jet skis, some are used for walking dogs, so you can get your dog down to the water. Some are used for launching kayaks, some are used for a number of things. So, you know, since the applicant's fine with reducing this to six feet, I think that's okay. But I don't know that it's necessarily up to us to set the size of a boat well.
Okay? All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll adjutant motion, please.
I move that we approve the application with the additional adjustments that the width of the jet ski hoist lift be converted to six feet. And I would suggest that a new sketch plan be presented to the planner, you know, reflecting that adjustment and the width of that and the new direction of it coming in from the south, so that that's what's on file.
We have a motion from Jay. Is there support?
Second.
We have support from Ann. Is there additional discussion? Discussion? Okay, I'll call a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Your application as revised is approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, we're moving on to a lot split combination, reconfiguration. The applicant is Groseal Township, representing the township is Dale Ream, Township Manager. The legal description of this is part of Lot 440 and Lot 439 of Supervisor's Groseal Platte Number 49. I know that was perfectly not clear, but, so we'll describe it in common terms. It's 0.8 acres that constitutes the entrance to the Albemarre Boat Club off of East River Road. This is located immediately north of Meso Island. Okay, a little background on this. The entrance to Albemarre Boat Club runs across the section of property that's owned by Groseal Township. For many years, the Boat Club has paid rent, essentially, to the township to use this property. Now they would like to buy it, okay? To make that happen, they've got a sales agreement, so negotiations are basically done pending approval of a lot split and reconfiguration. So, the actual proposal is to take 0.8 acres of the Groseal property, Lot 440, on the south side and combine it with their Albemarre Lot 339 property, okay? The 0.8 acre tract has about 80 feet of frontage along East River Road and looks to be about 50% of marsh or wetlands or water or whatever, okay? And includes a waterway as well. After this split, Township will have, will continue to own their piece of it to the north, and that piece is about 11 acres with about 800 feet or so of frontage along East River after this split and after this sale are complete. So what we're ending up with here is a slightly bigger parcel for Albemarre and a slightly smaller parcel for Groseal Township. Very difficult to describe, but I hope that it helps. So what we're going to do tonight is, the relevant ordinances on this, I believe in Article 24, lot splits and reconfigurations. But the process for that is twofold. Essentially, it comes from the planning commission first. We review it, we make a recommendation to the Township Board, and then the Township Board is the final approver. And I would expect that after tonight's discussion, that we would vote on this matter promptly. So, on that note, Brian, would you elaborate, please, and maybe show the pictures that might help?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. You didn't leave me much left to do here, so. This is one of those instances where I think a picture really does far more justice than trying to explain it as you just, you know, indicated. You did a great job explaining it, but when you take a look at the map, I think it becomes very clear. The yellow highlight that's before you, that is currently the south portion of Lot 440. That is Township property. The remaining piece south of that, albeit, mind you, this is oriented, so the north is left. The remaining piece and around back where you see parcel B showing on the plan, that's the Boat Club property. What this will do, as Chairman indicated, will simply alter the lot lines. It's what we refer to as a lot reconfiguration. We are not creating a new buildable parcel. We are simply shifting a lot line, in this case such that an additional eight tenths of an acre would go to the Boat Club. To me, the real keys and the real focus of my review are based on the dimensions, the resulting dimensions of both parcels, because we need to make sure that we're not entering ourselves into a situation where we have a substandard lot as a result of a reconfiguration. In this case, both of these parcels, even as resulting after the swap, are quite sizable. We're dealing with 11 and 12 acre properties. We have no issue on those dimensions. We have no issues on widths. And to me, really, the big kicker of this whole project is, as a result of it, we would have ourselves, we're basically eliminating a non-conforming situation in that the Boat Club property currently has only 20 feet of street frontage where our ordinance has a minimum 60-foot requirement. Following this project, if this were approved, they would have 100 feet of street frontage, which easily then is compliant with ordinance. So anytime we have a situation like this that complies with all dimensional standards and we can eliminate existing nonconformities, I see that as a positive and ultimately, I hate to say it, but a win-win between the Township as well as the Boat Club. Because now the Township is able to hand off a little bit of property for which they've had to, they've had to get lease agreements, they've had to be a landlord. The Township typically does not want to always be a landlord and the Boat Club can have their formal access and a new conforming parcel.
Thank you, Brian. Let's go to Township Manager, Mr. Dale Ream. Would you please comment?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have Jeff Forster from Albemarre Boat Club to Commodore with me as well, if there are any questions. But as stated by the Chairman and Mr. Borden, the Township currently owns Lot 440, the parcel A that you saw and see on the drawing. And the yellow area, the highlighted yellow area, is the area that is being proposed to be reconfigured, sold from the Township lot and attached to the Boat Club lot. And to give a little bit of history by way of background, the Township currently owns Lot 440 and it is a general fund-owned designation. And in February, and actually the February 28th meeting in 2011, the Township Board authorized a resolution transferring various general fund properties to open space designation. And Lot 440, with the exception of the south 80 feet and the triangular area, was accepted from this transfer. And in the Board's resolution, it states, "The Township has accepted the south's 80 feet and triangular area of approximately 2,480 square feet of Lot 440 Supervisor's Groseal Platte Number 49 from the transfer sale to open space with the intention of negotiating the sale of said property to the Albemarre Boat Club." And after the Board had approved that resolution, Jeff Forster, on behalf of the Boat Club and myself, on behalf of the Township Board, had some negotiation discussions and we had executed the purchase agreement as stated earlier, and I believe that was included in your packet of information. So, we would ask that this reconfiguration be approved and the next step would be to the Township Board for formal approval, then the actual legal descriptions would be sent to Wayne County, and then we could start charging taxes on the Boat Club.
Mr. Forster, would you care to comment? Get me about the taxes, I bet.
Thanks, Jeff Forster, 8828, Sunny Brook. Hi, as Dale said.
As Dale said, I'm the 2011 Commodore for Elbomar Boat Club, and this has been one of those board issues at the club for years. I've been on the board off and on now probably for the last 16 years or so, and it's, there's, we've always, I guess we've approached the Township maybe half a dozen times in just the last several years about trying to get that property, because it really is our entire entrance, and it really can't be used for much else. And the area right alongside this yellow, is this mouse working? Here we go.
There you go.
The area right along through here is a swamp, but this used to be a dump two years ago, so it needs some cleaning up. I could see us doing that. I could see us basically just being better stewards of that property, and, you know, it's finally no longer a question for board meetings in subsequent years. So, that's, and I, personally, I'd like to be able to say it happened in my year. So, that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Forrester. Okay, there's nobody in the audience, so we'll bring it back and run down the table. Jay, comments, please.
Yeah, let me start by, yeah, let me start by saying that, for everybody's knowledge, I'm probably one of the newest members of Elbomar Boat Club, so, in case it becomes controversial, I may have recusing issues, but I don't, it doesn't seem like that's going to be the case. Other than that, I don't have anything that seems like a real positive.
Okay. Ann?
Well, I think it's a good idea. That little stretch you have of getting in there right now, it isn't too convenient.
Great, thanks.
Jody?
Yeah, I think it's really awesome, and I can't believe I haven't done it before, so it's great. It's a really good thing, and I hope that you're able to clean up the dump.
Here, the only question I have is, and this is a question for Brian, right now that I'm assuming the Elbomar Boat Club is operated under a special use for that property, and if this particular easement, or particular section of property goes to them, if they were to make any improvements, would that be a condition of site plan approval, or how would that happen?
Yeah, it really would depend on the extent of any improvements. You know, realistically, I think about the only thing they could do with this would be to improve the driveway if they wanted. That really likely doesn't affect their special use approval of the Boat Club. It could probably be done as strictly a site plan review to make sure that widths were met, make sure that engineering specifications were good on any pavement that was to go in. I'd have to confirm it at the time, obviously, I don't want to make any, because who knows when that could come up in the future, but that would be my guess. That could obviously change, and it would depend on the extent of the improvements that they wanted to make. If they were making driveway improvements across this property, in addition to, say, some further dredging and some additional boat lifts, then obviously, it would get kicked back into a full special use review at that point, too.
Okay. That was the only question I had. I think other than that, you know, it meets our zoning ordinance standards for splitting it, so I see no problems with making the split.
Thank you, Eric. Brian?
I see no outstanding issues. Makes sense to me.
Okay. Jim?
No further questions, thank you.
Okay, then, on that basis, I entertain a motion, please, regarding the application for the lot split reconfiguration. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the lot split reconfiguration, so we can go back to the Township Board.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve lot split reconfiguration 378, as submitted from Jody, and I think Brian was supporting it down there. If there's no further discussion, I'll call a question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Recommendation, you should go back to the Township Board now, Brian?
Yes.
And assume you put that in writing form or whatever?
I will work with Dale, make sure we get that on the next available Township Board meeting.
Beautiful, excellent, very good.
Thanks very much, folks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to at least make mention to go on record, Todd Stanley had done the survey work and the application drawings on behalf of the Boat Club, which was part of our negotiation, and I wanted to compliment him publicly on how well he was to work with and how well he did with those drawings. It was a great application, and it was, it made it easier to review, and I hope that that was recognized by the commission. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. I'll tell you, there's nothing better than nice, clean, accurate drawings. It makes life very, very simple, and the chair is a lot less grumpy. Thank you.
Dale, before you leave, just one quick thing, just for, for clarification for anyone who's watching. The current lease on this property right now is for how much per year?
$1.
$1 per year, so it's not like there's a significant revenue loss to the Township for making this split?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the Chair's report, and there are a couple of topics here, just to kind of get ourselves grounded on a bit, and then what we want to do is kind of plan our path forward for each of these. The first is the update on road ends, okay? The road ends subcommittee that Jody is leading. Jody, could you kind of, at a high level, tell us kind of where you're at, because what we'd like to do is position ourselves to, potentially, if everybody agrees, bring this back to the Board or to our commission at the next meeting, to kind of finalize it and lock it down. So, Jody?
Well, there were three options that we reviewed. We went through the one where we did nothing, that the Township would do nothing, and like they've been doing previously, and that we thought that that wasn't an option. The other option was that we go through all the road ends that are available and decide from there, pick and choose as we went through. And then the third option was more proactive, where we would actually go out and just get all of the road ends and then decide from there how we wanted to handle them. And Jay and Ann and Steve and I met and discussed it and had some lengthy discussions about it and decided that the option, the most proactive option, was to go and claim all of the road ends from Wayne County and then go through them individually. We wanted to make sure that there was possibly a committee forum that contained a community member, and we wanted it to be very open and transparent through the Township Board, because we want everybody in the community to know exactly what we're doing and why we're doing it. But we felt that Wayne County, there was no way to really sheriff Wayne County to make sure that if they were going to drop a road end, that we would be alerted to that. There was just, even if we had somebody call once a week, we just felt that it couldn't go into perpetuity like that. We just had to do something. So, this seemed to make the most sense. We all agreed to it. I mean, we're willing to go forward with that, that we all moved forward. Jay, what would you like to add, because you were involved?
Yeah, I would just add, there are a couple of things that have been interesting to us and, you know, I don't want to shortcut the discussion for next time, but some things to think about that kind of shaped the direction of our discussions. And one of them was, you know, getting a better understanding of how a road end, you know, kind of the life of a road end, so to speak, and an education about how they, you know, what their current status is if nothing has been done with them, and then where they would go if the county were to vacate their rights to it and then, you know, through the Township, et cetera. And so, you know, I'm sure I will not get this exactly right, but I think I'll get it close enough for government work, so to speak. I can actually say that now. The idea is that currently, if you have a road end that has not been vacated by the county and by any other governmental entity, then it has, there is public access essentially to the road ends. And we think that's something that probably most of the Township's residents are not aware of. Even people who, you know, have rights to road ends by way of living next to them may not realize that Township residents have the right to that, maybe not unfettered right, but certain access rights to that property. And that was, that's something that I'm not sure a lot of people are aware of, and so I think one of the things that we want to do as part of this is, it's a bit of an education session for the community.
Right.
That, you know, how these things work and that, but not all of them are that way. Some of them have been vacated and are owned, you know, without limitation by the property owners who live, you know, next to them. So, that was one factor. But the second factor is, what happens is if the county were to vacate their property, it goes to, they would essentially, it goes through kind of a pecking order of people who get the right to step into their shoes to own it for the public's use. And so, one of those, the next on the line would be us, essentially. So, the county would essentially vacate their rights, offer it to us to claim those rights, and we would then have the right to either say, "Yes, we want it," and essentially do nothing, if I have it quite right. Whether we have to do something affirmatively or not, we have the right to either take the property or not. And then we can subsequently vacate our rights to it. And so, if we were to take, my initial thought was, we don't want to take all these property rights on, because, you know, thinking like any other ownership situation, we would, you know, have certain legal obligations and liabilities that may not be known at the time, and do we want to take on all of that? And based on things that we read and discussed, you know, we learned essentially, and we may want input from legal counsel and from our planners, but we essentially learned that we could take those rights, do an analysis over whatever time period that takes, six months, a year, whatever, and make, could reach conclusions that, yes, we want to keep every one of these, or we want to vacate, you know, these and do that through a public process of analysis. And as Jody said, one of our fears is that, you know, the county may not, you know, they have kind of a practice that we understand, but they may not follow it, and we may not be able to wreck quickly enough to those, and we may lose the rights to properties that we might want to retain. So, that's the teaser.
Okay, well, then, that's a lot to think about. So, in terms of being ready for next, for the next, you know, bringing this up for the next meeting, okay, what I'm hearing, I'm hearing, first of all, we're going to need some kind of a presentation on this, okay, where you dock it, show where these things are, you know, the kind of the scope of what's being talked about here, and then maybe summarize some of this process that Jay's talking about, and then, kind of, I'd like for you to work with Jody, to lead us through, lead us through the options they consider, the benefits and concerns, how we locked in on, you know, how they locked in on the third, and then the commission as a whole will talk about it. And then we'll decide by vote about that particular action. Does that make sense as a process? Eric, what do you think? Would that get us there?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay. Jody, what do you think? Could you work with Brian a little bit on that?
Sure.
And put something together for us? You know, kind of a nice, a nice package that actually could even be used, presumably, maybe an abbreviated version to take to the Board?
Yeah, exactly.
You know, because they'll have the same, they'll have the same questions that, you know, that'll come out from the Planning Commission. We get them answered once. And I think also, the other thing we ought to do, you know, if there's going to be an evaluation process on this property, you know, we ought to propose some kind of a path forward, like Jody was talking about, you know, how, who, and how, you know, so that, so we give some advice to the Township Board, you know, as to how to move forward if they want to. Okay? So, you know, let's get that down, too. I recall, that was part of your, you had it in your letter, some elements of that, so I recall. So, and I think if we do that, you know, that would make for a very nice, very nice planning topic for us. So, can we target that for the next meeting, please?
We can target it.
Maybe not. Don't we have the 7 and 5 meeting, July 5 meeting?
Uh, we don't have any meetings scheduled yet.
Laurie, wasn't there a special meeting of something you?
CBA, Zoning Board of Appeals.
Only the CBA? Okay.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Well, that's okay. Now, we got to get this clarified, so we'll pick a, we'll pick a meeting date here shortly, but, you know, we need to allow plenty of time for getting ready and all that, so. Okay, so that takes care of road ends, so we have a path forward on that. Everybody all right with that? Okay, let's move to the update on the zoning ordinance amendments, and this was, this was something that we've worked on now for, gee, a number of months? It's almost becoming a standing committee. Yes, I think it is, actually. Speaking of our standing committee, here is our standing committee chairman right here. That's right. Jay, you know, as I recall, the last thing that happened on this was we actually rolled forward hard language in the ordinance for probably half dozen or six or eight, and there were, you'd worked, you and your committee had worked a substantial number of changes, and you got input from the committee. And at that point, okay, that was probably what, January? It was a long time ago. February? But, any case, from your perspective, okay, we provided input, I think, okay, are we ready to bring this forward?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we are.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was trying to answer the question for him. Yes, yes, we are. Let me just jump right in. Yeah, I think we're in position, you know, the last time that we spoke on these, there were a few changes, a few modifications. I think we got everything squared away. I have made those. I did not put them in your packet tonight, because I didn't want to sort of overwhelm you with anything, and I didn't want to really reopen Pandora's Box, so to speak, because I think we got there. So, in my opinion, if you all are comfortable, I think we're ready to go ahead with public hearing. We'll take care of the notifications for the upcoming meeting, if you're comfortable with that approach.
Okay. Well, as I recall, you know, we worked those over pretty good the last time, pretty well the last time.
Yeah, in April, we had a set of ordinance changes on there. Are those the latest ones?
No, there are changes that were from that meeting.
Okay.
There was discussion that night, correct.
Correct.
Is there anything in there, I can't recall, that would be controversial, that we would expect a public hearing to be?
At this point, I don't think so. We, if you recall, the original draft is about 70, 80 pages long, and there was a touch of some, I don't want to say controversy, but there were some issues in there that certainly were going to warrant additional discussion. And the goal and the focus of the subcommittee was to tailor that down, to really fine-tune it and hit this first group of amendments, which we felt were a good grouping and which we felt were all pretty straightforward. You know, with that being said, I think once we get through that process, I still think there's the next layer of amendments that I think we would like to pursue, but I think what we found through this process is it's probably a little bit easier to take them on in decent-sized chunks, as opposed to trying to put through 18, 19, 20 different amendments that cover 80 different pages of the ordinance. So, certainly lesson learned, I think, on our part in terms of the best way to process this, so everybody grasps exactly what it is that we're trying to change.
All right, excellent. Well, I think we have probably our agenda for the next, for the next meeting. You said there were no other applications out there?
Not at this point, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Well, then, let's pick it in the next meeting, okay? We're on the third Monday of June. If we move past, if we move past July and pick up, pick up the third Monday in August, that would be the 15th. That'd be two months out. Plenty of time to get ready, nothing critical. What do you think, folks? That work for everybody?
Good for me.
I may be out of town. I haven't set our vacation schedule yet. Got a question mark next to it.
Okay. Well, would you prefer we work around that?
No, because I don't know what we would work around to yet. We're still trying to figure out our August vacation schedule, so.
All right, well, we'll, and then we'll leave it at the 15th. Let's try August 15th, two months out, and we'll be ready to go on those two topics.
All right.
Okay, anything else anybody wants to raise at this point? Okay, then that completes the Chair's report, and I entertain a motion to adjourn. So moves. Marshall, Eric, support? Support for Jay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, folks. Meeting adjourned.